Technically.
Call the meeting to order. So roll call, we have seven present, so we have a quorum. We'll start with announcements, turn it over to Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Items number five, twenty-three, twenty-six, and twenty-eight have been withdrawn. Items number nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two are on your consent agenda for deferral. We do have in front of you, and we emailed these to you today, the supplemental reports for items seventeen and eighteen. Those are on your desks. And we have revised reports for items sixteen, twenty-six, and thirty-seven, and they are also on your desks. I'm going to turn it over to Mike, who has a few announcements. Mike?
All right, thank you, Aaron. Just a couple of things from me tonight. I've talked to you before about a couple of projects that we've been working on. One is Greenways Master Plan, and the other is a roadway safety action plan. Both of those plans have been, we've been working on those pursuant to an SS4A grant that we received to fund those studies. Both those projects have gone really well. They're kind of winding down. I know some of you have participated in some of those, you know, some of the public participation opportunities. There will be a couple of virtual meetings to conclude those studies. Later in the year, we plan to finish those early in 2026. The other thing I want to mention to you is that on Monday night, the county commission adopted a resolution that creates a task force to evaluate the county's septic regulations and to, the goal of which is to streamline those regulations, make them closely, more closely at least than they do now, mirror what the state requires. That's a project that will get underway first half of December, and the task force will complete their work by April. And that's all I have.
Good deal. Thank you. So we're, we'll first move into the public comment period. This is, this is not the agenda item public hearing, but this is a public comment period. The, each person will come to this podium and state their name and address. And, and you will have up to three minutes to speak. And I, and we'll leave it at that. There, there are some names on both lists, and so we'll talk about, we'll address that at the second public hearing. You, you can speak at both times, but maybe we don't say the same thing twice. So, but please, we'll start with the first one. It's Betsy Hester.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. I appreciate it. I wanted to, to thank everyone on the planning commission, and particularly our staff members who've done such a great job and have listened to the difficulties that we have communicated. And I just got here first, but there are many other people who have done so much work on this situation. I can't imagine the horror of having relatives' grave disturbed by a septic tank step system. I would personally like to have the step system with an escrow account for maintenance for all of the components. We in the, we in the county commission fiduciary body, we can't help people who have problems with the step system. And it's, I'm afraid it's going to happen, so please listen tonight as we talk about this. It's a big responsibility. It's a huge responsibility. But there are some people who have done a lot more work than I have. I did visit the gravesite, and there are artifacts there aplenty. And a grave for Ms., you could see Ms. Ella Dotson, and it's all cleaned up thanks to Kathy Marlin. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tom Schenkenberger. Hopefully, I didn't botch that too bad. For an engineer, not bad.
Not bad at all. Thanks. I'm Tom Schenkenberger. I'm in College Grove in the Vineyard Valley subdivision. I'm currently the president of the HOA there. I came tonight just to reinforce the email I'd sent in Monday morning, looking perhaps for a little help and alternatives from this planning commission with regard to the sidewalk issue that we have. I guess we're faced with, with two options, one of which is to cut our existing forty-eight inch sidewalk and make it thirty-six inches wide, or go with a variance to change the width of the road right away, from forty feet to thirty-eight feet. Apparently, it was decided that we needed to have a hundred percent approval rate from all the homeowners to get the variance approved. Well, as one of the guys who went around collecting signatures, we got sixty-seven out of sixty-eight. And we're struggling right now to get that sixty-eighth. Our developer Willow Branch is trying to work closely with them, but it's a family that is not happy living in College Grove, Tennessee even for that matter. And they're doing this despite the developer, the builder, and the community, and they don't intend to sign. And we sure could use some help from you to maybe accept a lower approval rate, because we don't want the sidewalks cut. We don't want the construction. We don't want the cost associated with redoing fifty percent of the irrigation systems. And I'm just here to ask for your help. And I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Jason Holman.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. Jason Holman, attorney in Nashville, and I represent a number of the adjacent and adjoining property owners to this particular site. I know this has been in front of you for a couple of meetings now. One of the specific requests that was made previously was as to the exact scope and location of, yes, sir.
Which property?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm referring to the, well, I've now blanked on the name of it. The subdivision, the Allison Chapel Road. Sorry, I just.
Just wanted to make sure.
I apologize, yes. You have concept plan in front of you. Of course, you also have the sewer plan in front of you. These are somewhat related, at least as to the issue that I want to raise, which is the scope and scale of that cemetery, which, as you're aware, from the previous meetings, is, is the area where they plan to do the, the step system, septic system. And we have asked that that be more thoroughly vetted. We don't believe that that analysis is complete. We don't believe that the full scope of that cemetery has been identified. What I would like to point out is that if it is not, I believe that is an incomplete application, and we would ask that you recommend disapproval, or that you disapprove. In lieu of that, as I'm sure you're aware within your subdivision regs, thirteen point oh nine is the section. There are two tracts that you can deal with historic sites or historic structures. The A part is to let that be owned by the HOA. The B part is to have that set aside in at least a five acre tract that could then be subsequently owned by a nonprofit entity. What I would suggest to you is if you are inclined to approve this tonight, that you make a condition of that approval, that the developer elect that B part and carve this off as at least a five acre tract. That would give a wider buffer to be more certain that we are including the full scope of the cemetery. And as I'm sure you're aware from previous comments, the AME Church is very involved, very engaged. They are a qualifying entity under that regulation.
Thirty seconds.
So I hope that you'll consider that as a potential condition if you would like to move forward. Thank you.
Next is Graham Perry.
Hello, everyone. I'm Graham Perry, and I am the Historic Cemetery Preservation Specialist at the Tennessee Historical Commission. My address is seven one oh five Grammer Drive, Fairview, Tennessee. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the cemetery that's in question right now. As part of my job, what I do is, is I will, I don't have any enforcement power or anything like that, but I do connect with other people that do. And so in a case like this, my job is to cheerlead groups, like the group that is taking on the cemetery and trying to, you know, bring the attention to it. I, I will cheer them on. Also, the other, other thing is, is I will, I immerse myself in the state laws as far as cemetery goes. And the cemetery law, as far as Tennessee goes, is kind of gray. That's one of the things that the commission is trying to work on, or the cemetery committee, is we're trying to, right now, write a five-year plan for recommendations for the legislature to perhaps streamline some of that law so that we don't have these problems in the future. In this particular case, my concern as a historic preservation specialist of the cemetery is the leach field as it applies to the, the distance it is from the cemetery. We don't really know how large the cemetery is. In my experience, especially with African-American cemeteries, which this is, they are generally larger than people think they are. That being said, it's like over the years, what happens is, is, you know, farmers farm the land and everything, and they take a little bit, and they don't even realize it's part of the cemetery or anything like that. And so it ends up looking like it's part of the cemetery is, you can't even tell it's the cemetery. It's just the field. And I've seen that a lot of times. So my recommendation, or our office's recommendation as far as this goes, is it would be, it would be great if the developer would do a further archaeological survey on the area to see if the graves spread out any further. Last time I went there, it looked like somebody had done something like that, but I've not gotten any evidence that anybody's done that. But it looked like people were spray painting the graves on the, on the, and it was out in the area that I had suspected there were probably more graves. In this particular case, Allison Chapel is a very important African-American.
Twenty seconds, please.
Local site, yes. And so because of the, because of the historical artifacts that are there, because of the graves that are there, a leach field will leach into a grave, and that would be a violation of TCA thirty-nine seventeen three eleven, which covers desecration.
Thank you.
And, yes.
Thanks.
So thank you so much.
Yep. Next is Dory Bowles.
Hello, I'm Dory Bowles. I'm the founder and president of Harpeth Conservancy. I also happen to be a resident of Williamson County, officially Williamson County. And I just wanted to touch on tonight, I wanted to give you a little bit of background specific to decentralized sewer systems. This is one of the, that's the item seventeen that is a proposed system for Owen Valley and how it relates to the issue with the cemetery right next to it. And I wanted to just give some highlights on the work that TDEC did. I think you also had Written Dots that come speak possibly not long ago. They did a twenty twenty-four statewide review of site review of all of the fields out there across the state. And twenty-four, twenty-five percent, which is almost a hundred, of those fields are having major problems, which meant when you have a big field, volume of water is not supposed to pond on it. And then there are times it actually can leave the site. That's when you really have a big failure. And that has been, that is an issue that's popped up in Williamson County. Williamson County actually didn't have that many problems, but they have, TDEC has been dealing with a couple that are having major problems. And one of those is actually not very far from here. It's the one that serves the Grove. So we can think of that as something that we need to consider when reviewing the site plan for the night for the Owen Valley Treatment System, because the treatment field and the reserve field that you all require are right next to the cemetery, which is not well delineated yet, as you've just heard. So there is definitely a risk with leach aid if, if the field has problems of actually leaving the site and going right into the cemetery. I just wanted to highlight that as something that you need to consider. And let me just see if there's anything else. I think fundamentally, since the applicant has, has taken much of your all's time to try and help you get the information you need, especially about the Allison School, Church School and Cemetery, that at this point, it would be really best to deny and let them figure everything out and come back. So the drip field system and everything is designed in a way so it also conserves and protects the cemetery. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Connor Valentine.
My name is Connor Valentine. I live at sixty-nine twenty Owen Dale Lane in College Grove. I live near the Allison Chapel School and Cemetery site. We have a very important cultural and historic location that was so close to being forgotten about. Imagine the contrast in possible outcomes. One option, you put a fence around it, a sign, surround that with a septic system. The other option, set aside five to fifteen acres as a preservation lot that would undoubtedly and unquestionably encompass the full extent of the cemetery and preserve the spirit and integrity of this historic and cultural resource. For a location as unique and important as the Allison Chapel grounds, the maximum preservation standard should be applied as outlined in section thirteen. I ask that you reject both the septic plan and the concept plan applications tonight, or deny them. We've seen enough deferrals. The applications are incomplete and inadequate. I'd also ask that any new application have the additional contingencies that a third party conduct the site survey for the cemetery, not the same company doing the site survey again. And it be overseen by local historians, historians and cemetery experts. We have those in the room tonight. I'd also ask that a minimum of five acres for a preservation be a contingency on any future application. The last request would be that the new preservation lot would be dedicated in perpetuity to a nonprofit, as allowed in section fourteen. We have the AME Church present tonight, and I can't think of any better steward for this historic resource than the original church, church that built it. The community has come together with a very positive and aspirational vision for rural and historical preservation as part of smart development. Imagine a community-led restoration effort of the Allison Cemetery, the artifacts being on displays, family stories being told, historical photos being preserved and shown and on display, and even reconstructing a replica school building in the same site where it previously stood. We have the community coming together to make this positive vision possible, and I ask that the planning commission please continue to support these efforts going forward, denying the applications and demanding more protections in any future application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alan Ryder.
Hi, my name is Alan Ryder. I live on sixty-seven thirty-one Owen Hill Road in College Grove. I'm here to speak against the proposed Owen Valley subdivision. I moved to Williamson County because if you look at this great seal behind you, it has a lot of agricultural symbols with horses and cattle, which I have on my property as well. So I moved, I moved to Williamson County to make the investment to the property I had so I could live, you know, a rural lifestyle. There aren't even seventy-two homes, I think, on Owen Hill Road, yet we've got a proposed subdivision on RD five-zoned property that's going to put seventy-two homes in less than three hundred and seventy-five acres. So it's just kind of hard to understand how this isn't a loophole to do a conservation subdivision to get around the RD five zoning when we've got farms all around there. So it's, 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 it's kind of hard to see, you know, with many of the issues that we already have with the infrastructure on that road. It's a very windy road, two lanes, goes around a lot of curves. There are tractors on it. My neighbors, the hatters, they're on there with their tractor. Occasionally, I'm on there with my tractor, so that causes issues. So if you take seventy-two homes, have three cars on average, and that's going to be the traffic going up and down that road, that's going to cause a lot of problems. So that's not a rural lifestyle to have that many homes, that many cars, just plugged in an RD five-zoned area. So, you know, I don't know what else to say, except, you know, you know, we've got, you know, an issue where I think the conservation subdivision's just being used as a loophole. The county doesn't seem to value the agricultural property anymore. We don't even have any agricultural land around the ag center anymore. It's all business land. So it kind of losing the inspiration that it had for the county seal of having agriculture. And there's, that's just it for a rural lifestyle. You've got all these other issues regarding, you know, the hatters and some of the other folks having, you know, cemetery plots there that aren't really being taken into consideration with a lot of, you know, with a lot of help from the developer as well. So all those combined together, I think, just lead to a situation where there's nothing else to do but to reject the application for the subdivision. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Next is Ari Spangler.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ari Spangler. I live at five six one two Carney Lane in Franklin. And I'm here tonight speaking on agenda, agenda item number thirty-eight, which is the Terra Vista Roads Drainage and Erosion Bond Update. I, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Terra Vista HOA and the ninety-eight homeowners that live in our community. And I just wanted to thank the commissioners for, for taking the initiative to ask the developer, the Jones Company, to come in and give an update once a month until they're complete with the, the RDE checklist. There's still quite a bit of work that needs to be done in our community, and our developer, the Jones Company, seems to kind of have disappeared. We have seen a little bit of activity lately. They, they seem to have finished the retention basin, and today they were out doing some drilling in the street. But there's a lot of curbs that are crumbling, a lot of dead landscaping, really steep slopes that are improper. And we have a road that's pretty dangerous for the kids in our neighborhood. There's, it's a steep gravel road that's in access to the, the step system. And the gravel, every time it rains, comes falling down onto the street. And so kids in our neighborhood can't play there on their bikes. And we would fully support. there on their bikes. And we would fully support calling the bond if the developer can't complete all of the items on the RDE within the next six months or so. And I would just like to thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Judy Herbert.
Hi, y'all. I'm Judy Herbert, County Commissioner for the Second District. I signed up for both, but this one I'm just going to speak on one, on Vineyard Valley. And I'll speak on the other one before it. And Tom, the first speaker, pretty much summed it up. There was a problem when the developer developed this. He didn't allow enough land for footage for the road, and then it got into the sidewalk and the irrigation. And I talked to Eddie Hood, and he said he's okay with the variance, just as long as everybody signs the paper. As you heard the guys, Tom say, she doesn't want to sign it. And I understand the lawsuit the county could be in without signing all of them. So I understand that. I'm just asking to maybe give them some time where they can work it out, and maybe she'll sell her house. But I'm just asking for a little time to help them out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that ends the public comment period, and we'll move on to Item Five, consideration of minutes from last meeting. Do we have any questions or comments on the minutes?
[inaudible]
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Consideration of consent agenda, and note that there were a few deferrals on the consent agenda, but do we have any discussion there, or do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. And now we'll move into the items. So first item on the list is old business. Site plan review for Owen Valley Treatment Facility for Owen Valley Subdivision, non-traditional wastewater system on 374.29 acres located off Owen Hill Road in the Second Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item has been deferred numerous times since your June meeting. It's located off of Owen Hill Road. You can see it here in the red. The properties are approximately 374 acres in size, and the proposed to serve the Owen Valley subdivision plan for the property, that will appear as Item 18 on your agenda. So the previous staff report recommending approval was included in your November Planning Commission packet that you have. The supplemental report that we emailed you today, and we do have on your desks in front of you, provided incorporates all of the findings and the facts of the previous staff report. Additional information and documentation from the public received since providing those staff report have been received, and that information and documentation contained historic resources and additional detail and proof of presence of vestiges of the church and school located on the property. This information contradicts the findings in the applicant's reports attached to the previous staff reports. I believe for Item 17, that was attachments 17, four, and five. Staff conducted its own evaluation utilizing historic photographs and other images and found inconsistencies and contradictions to that staff, or to the applicant's report. Staff feels the applicant's efforts to locate the graves and vestiges of the church and school woefully inadequate and could result in potential damage to these historic resources if not evaluated further. And staff can no longer recommend approval of the site plan at this time. The applicant has the following options in regards to this site plan. Number one, the applicant may request to withdraw the application from consideration, in which case the application may not be resubmitted for six months and must be submitted with all of the information below, and I'll read that off in just a moment. Applicant, or number two, the applicant may request to defer the application to a future meeting with sufficient time to provide the following information. And that is additional groundwater information identifying the seasonal depth to the water table and groundwater flow gradient associated with the drip dispersal area in order to confirm whether it will have a potential impact on the cemetery and the graves located therein. That a full archaeological survey of the development property to confirm the extent and formal delineation of the cemetery, church, and school. Conduct research and provide a report describing the historic nature or designation of the church, school, and cemetery. And conduct a title search and opinion to determine if the area consisting of the church, school, and cemetery was previously set aside as a separate parcel, and the extent of which that parcel may have been, including prior ownership. Whenever there is evidence, proof, or even an indication from public information of historic and cultural resources and the evidence of the presence of graves, the county and planning commission must proceed with an abundance of caution so that those resources are protected and not destroyed, thus forever losing the benefit, those historic and cultural resources to the community. Staff is not comfortable with the efforts by the developer to date and cannot recommend that the planning commission approve a site plan without the assurances that these resources are safe from the activities associated with developing this property, including the long-term potential effects associated with a subsurface drip emitter disposal system without more information on the water table and groundwater flow in relation to the, the presence of human remains, excuse me. So therefore, should the applicant not choose either Option One or Two, staff cannot recommend approval of the site plan and recommends that the planning commission deny the application due to the insufficiency of the information provided, the research conducted, and the lack of assurances that Section 13.08 of the zoning ordinance and Section 1.03 and 1.05 of the subdivision regulations have been met. One additional item, Mr. Chairman. This afternoon, staff did receive a deferral request to the January 2026 meeting from the applicant. Staff does not feel this is an adequate amount of time to complete the research that we've just ascribed to you. If you do accept a deferral, we recommend that any deferral be made to at least the February 2026 meeting, but the applicant does have to agree to this.
Thank you. So we will move forward with the public hearing at this time.
That's the next one.
You're correct. Thank you. There we go. That was easy. All right. So we're not public hearing yet. I apologize. We are dealing with this before us. Is there any, are there any comments from the applicant at this time?
Richard Howes with SEC. At this time, we are agreeable to the deferral till the February meeting. We found out about all this information at about 10 o'clock this morning, so we're trying to play catch-up on, on this extra items.
Okay.
Information, so.
Thank you. Are there any, any questions from planning commission? Yes, sir.
Has any movement been made to try to relocate this treatment center from where it is?
The soils are where, are located right beside it. That's the only soils on the site that we have at this time that we know of, and that's the only place we can put it. Now, with that being said, the soils that are shown is the reserve area. The drip zones themselves are over 200 feet away. And the nearest structure that would be built with the treatment facility is 600 feet away. And we are on a down gradient. We're between 10 and 30-foot elevation difference between the cemetery elevation and where our, our site plan is.
Okay, but my question is, have you checked any other locations?
We have grid stake based on what the soil scientists told us to do, and this is where we found the soils.
So you don't know, you don't know if there's other soils on the property that...
To my knowledge, no.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Or, yes, sir?
So the gentleman that spoke with the Historical Commission, and of course, the Historical Commission's administratively attached to my department at the state, and I give great respect to him and what he's speaking to. So I am concerned, and I think the risk of damage and loss to cultural assets seems very apparent, and that's probably what causes me the most concern. So I do think there's definitely a need for further look into that. But with, with my four years on the commission, planning commission here, I'm also on the county commission, but serve on this planning commission, I've not had a report come from staff like this yet. So there are clearly some issues. There are lots of hesitations, and I think your application runs a real risk of being denied.
Correct.
Based on what's going on. So I saw the options, and I guess one of my questions is, are you interested in a withdrawal based on that timeline, or do you want us to continue with our hearing tonight?
My client is not interested in withdrawal.
Okay.
They want the deferral. We, we've worked with staff, been doing ground penetrating radar in the areas that we were requested to do. We did find some extra bodies out there over on the north side of the property. We have designated those and left, and leaving them in the open space as required. We have shifted lots around to accommodate some of this, too. Now, the drip field, I cannot put soils anywhere else that I know of that would allow us to put the step system in somewhere else.
Okay.
Again, we are not developing in that corner. That corner will be left alone. The only thing that's there is the reserve soils. I mean, we're not planning on going up there and building a house or digging it up or anything like that.
Okay. I have a question for probably counsel. If this were denied, what are the options for the applicant to do the project in the future? Is there an opportunity to resubmit a new project, and what impacts does it have on the applicant if it's denied?
I don't know. Let me check your bylaws about that. Sometimes there's a provision that it can't be resubmitted within a certain amount of time if it's denied, but I need to look at that.
Okay, that's what I was curious, because a withdrawal is six months. What would a denial be? And if we have time to wait for that answer, that might be relevant.
Yeah, we can wait.
Yeah. Everybody just sit tight.
So while we're waiting, I'll, I'll ask one more question. So the, the reserve space soils that you're discussing, you know, I know in the last month, y'all have looked further into the field and, and, but the area that was looked at and on the plans, it kind of looks like you're maybe encroaching, but, but that was just the area that was reviewed, correct?
Correct.
But do you need that mu, do you, is that reserve area a required amount that you, you need? Could, could you...
Can we shrink it some? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
I believe we can, but my boss is the one that actually did those plans. I usually do the rest of the engineering on it, so I would have to ask him to make sure.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Jim, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If, if we were to go for a deferral on this, would it be possible to have a monthly update on this to the commission?
We could, yeah. I, I don't, don't know that we, what would we gain from that, I guess, is what I would ask.
Information to keep informed of the status of what they've found. I'm more concerned about what they've found as far more grave sites compared to where the fields are.
Yeah. And ultimately, we'll see the accumulation of the data, you know, if they reapply. But I'm not opposed to it if the county want, I mean, if the commission wanted to do that, I'm not opposed to that, but...
I have a question following up on what the chairman was asking about. I mean, theoretically, you could reduce the wastewater treatment area. That would just mean reducing the number of lots that flow to it.
No, I think we've got a little bit of extra soils already accounted for, but, and we could reduce it down. We, it would, instead of having half an acres of extra soils, we would only have maybe tenth of an acre kind of thing. But I'd have to talk with my boss on that to find out, because he's the expert in that regards.
So you think with the current design, there's probably some extra in there?
Correct.
But what I'm asking is, if you had to reduce the area even further, then it would only provide for X number of lots to flow there, so you'd have to reduce the number of lots?
If we reduced it down past that, that ultimate point, yes, it would reduce the number of lots.
That's assuming, assuming soils on site.
There's no other suitable soils on site, right?
Correct.
Anything else? If counsel thinks that she can find that in a reasonable time, I might suggest we defer it for...
I don't, I don't see a limitation if there's a denial for refiling. Of course, the reasons for the denial, if nothing has changed, would be there with a new application with the same information. But I don't see a restriction on returning with an application, a similar application on the property.
Okay. If that's the case, I think with the history of this project, the seemingly lack of concern for the issues with the historical resources on the ground, and the multiple times we've deferred this, I'm going to encourage this commission to deny the application at this point. And if it wants to be resubmitted on a new project, they can go under the rules and do that as they need. But I think it's apparent that there's issues here that we need to make sure are stressed. We have a great development community in our county and in the cities, and I don't like seeing these issues on projects. Like I said, I've been on the planning commission four years now. This is the first time I've seen this.
Correct.
And so I'm going to strongly encourage our planning commission to deny this application at this point.
Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion for denial because of that.
I have a motion for denial. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for denial.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Crowhan, what can you give the, the support for the reason for your motion?
Not having enough current information on the sites of the cemetery and for the application not being complete.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question on that? Can I ask a question?
Ask him.
Sure.
So if, this is the second time we've been, the day before, with staff recommended approval. Last minute, we get told we need to either defer or deny. So, I mean, how does that affect our legal rights with this property? I mean, I understand we're, we're short some information. We're willing to work to provide it. But again, to deny the project and not let us continue to defer so we can provide the additional information that was requested at 10 o'clock this morning.
Yeah, I would, I would have to look at counsel for that, but...
Well, I mean, I'm not going to give you legal advice.
Oh, I'm not asking for legal advice. I'm just asking, how does this affect us?
Let me finish. As I told the county commissioner, planning commissioner, if you are denied, there's not a restriction on refiling it, so long as it's different than the reasons that they've denied it now. If you withdrew it, you would have to wait six months.
Correct.
If it's deferred, then it would be deferred to whatever time that it's deferred to. But it sounds to me like the planning commission doesn't wish to defer again.
Okay. That's what I was asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion for denial and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
One, no. Motion passes for denial. Do we have to take anything? Okay. Okay, moving on to Item 18, Concept Plan Review for Owen Hill, Owen Valley Subdivision containing 72 lots on 374.29 acres located off Owen Hill Road in the Second Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has been deferred numerous times since your June meeting. This is located off of Owen Hill Road. You can see it on the screen in red. Properties are approximately 374 acres in size. Properties are approximately 374 acres in size, and this concept plan contains 72 lots. Well, I don't know what happened. Hold on just a second, Mr. Chairman. We have technical difficulties. Had battery problems. All right. Previous staff report recommending approval was included in your November planning commission packet. This supplemental report provided incorporates all of the findings and facts of the previous staff report. Additional information and documentation from the public has been received since providing that staff report to you. Information and documentation regarding historic resources and additional detail and proof of presence of vestiges of the church and school located on the property. This information contradicts the findings in the applicant's reports attached to the previous staff report. Staff concluded, conducted its own evaluation and utilizing historic photographs and other images and found inconsistencies and contradictions with the applicant's report. Staff feels the applicant's efforts to locate graves and vestiges of the church and school woefully inadequate and could result in potential damage to this, these historic resources if not evaluated further, and staff can no longer recommend approval of the concept plan at this time. Applicant has the following options in regards to the, to this concept plan. Applicant may request to withdraw the application from consideration, in which case the application may not be resubmitted for six months and must be submitted with the information I'll list below. Applicant may request to defer the application to a future meeting with sufficient time to provide the information below. So that would be the additional groundwater information identifying the seasonal depth to the water table and groundwater flow gradient associated with the drip dispersal area in order to confirm whether it will have a potential impact on the cemetery and the graves located therein. A full archaeological survey of the development property to confirm the extent and formal delineation of the cemetery, church, and school. Conduct research and provide a report describing the historic nature or designation of the church, school, and cemetery. And finally, conduct a title search and opinion to determine if the area consisting of the church, school, and cemetery was previously set aside as a separate parcel and the extent of what that parcel may have been, including any prior ownership. Whenever there is evidence, proof, or even an indication for public information of historic and cultural resources and the evidence of the presence of graves, county and planning commission must proceed with an abundance of caution so that those resources are protected and not destroyed, thus forever losing the benefit, those historic and cultural resources to the community. And staff is not comfortable with the efforts by the developer to date and cannot recommend that the planning commission approve a concept plan without the assurances that these resources are safe from the activities associated with developing this property, including the long-term potential effects associated with a subsurface drip emitter disposal system without more information on the water table and groundwater flow in relations to the presence of human remains. So therefore, should the applicant not choose either option one or two, staff cannot recommend approval of this concept plan and recommends that the planning commission deny the application due to the insufficiency of the information provided, the research conducted, and the lack of assurances that section 13.08 of the zoning ordinance and sections 1.03 and 1.05 of the subdivision regulations have been met. One additional item, Mr. Chairman. As before, we did receive a request to defer this application to the January 2026 meeting, and staff doesn't feel this is an adequate amount of time to complete the research we've requested and outlined for you. If any deferral is made, we would, we would recommend it be at least to the February 2026 meeting, but the applicant does have to agree to that.
Thank you. So at this point, we will hold the public hearing on this. There are 19 people signed up, and there, there's a couple of duplicates, but, but not a lot. So I would ask, first, I would ask if the, the max time we're allowed per our bylaws is 30 minutes for the public hearing. If we want to, we are able to extend that time. Each person is allowed three minutes, as long as it stays below the 30 minutes. And so with the 19, I would entertain a motion to extend the public hearing longer. But we do not have to have, we don't have to do that, but just throw that out.
I have one question, Chairman. Related to procedures, I'm just trying to remember how this has been handled in the past, and hopefully staff can clarify. But when we have a wastewater plan and then a concept plan, it feels like usually we don't entertain the concept plan if the wastewater plan is not proceeding.
Mr. Chairman, I can address that.
Yes, please.
So there are two separate items on the agenda. There are two different actions, right? At this point, you can't approve a concept plan without an approved wastewater site plan, but that would be an additional justification if you have other reasons to deny it or just that reason. So we would need to conduct a public hearing, because you all continued it from the last time, because all of that content and all of that information that they're sharing with you would be part of the information that you would consider in reviewing the concept plan. But a primary consideration at this point is that there is no approved wastewater site plan.
Correct. Yeah. I probably, it's what we discussed. I should have explained that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I might suggest, based on the previous vote, that we not extend the timeline, and if my math is correct, it would give each speaker about a minute and a half instead of three minutes, and that might be adequate information for us to consider based on what, how we just voted.
I'm good with that. Is everybody good with that?
Seven.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, so we'll keep it at 30 minutes, a minute and a half each, you know? And I think it's, also, we can help each other out by, first off, I will say, we did receive lots of emails and lots of correspondence. We, and we, as the county, as the planning commissioners, received every email that was sent into the planning commission's email address. So we're not on there individually, but we, as a group, receive every one of them, and thank you all for that information, and, and we all get to read through those and take those into consideration as well as print them out for us here. So, and the other thing I would ask is, if somebody has just repeated everything, just say, hey, I agree with everything that was just said, and, but here's some new information. That will help us keep it at a minute and a half each. And with that, I appreciate everybody's help on that, and let's move forward with, first is Reverend Boyce Wilkins.
Good evening, good evening to the planning commission and all assembled here today. I'm the Reverend Boyce Wilkins Jr., pastor of Shorter Chapel AME Church, 255 Natchez Street, Franklin, Tennessee. And on behalf of the African Methodist Episcopal Church, I submit this statement to express our deep concern and unwavering commitment to the preservation of the Allison Chapel AME Church, its historic school, and the sacred burial grounds located in College Grove, Tennessee. Sir, on behalf of the AME Church, we respectfully and fervently impress upon this planning commission the prohibition of development at this site to prevent the desecration of graves, the destruction of remnants of our school, and the erasure of history of all those who lived, worked, worshipped, and have been laid to rest on that sacred site, who also have descendants present in this assembly today. The AME Church stands ready to work with all stakeholders to ensure Allison Chapel is preserved not only as a relic of the past, but also as a living testimony to faith, resilience, and the enduring contributions of all African Americans in Williamson County, Tennessee. Respectfully, Reverend Boyce Wilkins Jr., the AME Church.
Next is Jason Hulerman. And if you don't want to speak, you can just say, I pass. Moving on to Joe Novak.
I see my time.
Thank you. Dory Bowles.
I see my time.
Thank you. Connor Valentine.
I see my time.
Thank you. Bari Beasley.
I'll be quick. Barry Beasley, serves as president and CEO of the Heritage Foundation of Williamson County. The Heritage Foundation stands with the College Grove community in affirming the historical and cultural significance of the Allison Chapel site, home to one of the county's earliest African-American churches and schools, and the sacred burial ground located there. The presence of these graves demands the highest level of respect and care. Their preservation is not optional, it's a matter of moral responsibility and legal obligation. We strongly oppose any development plan that would compromise, disturb, or build upon the cemetery, church site, or the surrounding land. Protecting this hallowed ground honors both the legacy of College Grove's black community and the broader heritage of Williamson County. This moment is an opportunity for the commission to show how history can guide thoughtful development, development that balances progress with preservation. The Heritage Foundation supports sensitive, sensible, and contextual growth, growth that reflects College Grove's values and lifestyle, protects sacred sites like cemeteries, and ensures lasting stewardship of the community's unique character. Our advocacy calls on planners, staff, and commissioners to use these community-driven values as a compass in shaping all future decisions for College Grove and its irreplaceable heritage. In August, the Heritage Foundation hosted a town hall meeting in College Grove to listen to residents and learn firsthand what preservation means to this community. Many of those residents are here tonight, some have spoken, all share a deep and ongoing commitment to the values voiced directly by local people, values rooted in care, respect, and pride.
30 seconds, please.
All right. Tonight's vote is more than a procedural step. It's a referendum on responsible growth in Williamson County, a defining moment for how we balance progress with preservation and how we honor the people and places that build our shared story. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Pierce.
My name is Mary Pierce. I am one of the founders of the African American Heritage Society and was with the Heritage Foundation for decades. I did visit the site. I think if you went, you would find it to be very clear that there, it does extend beyond what is identified. And just with the rich story there is to tell there, it is a magnificent cultural resource for Williamson County, and historic preservation is not about saying no to development. It is about saying yes to the right development, and I feel like the plan that was submitted turns a pretty much deaf ear to incorporating this incredible site into the development and making it an asset instead of part of the drainage field. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Marquita Harvey.
My name is Dr. Marquinta Harvey, and I am representing the Hatcher family, specifically the grandchildren from the Hatcher family. We have been farming on Owen Hill Road for 122 years, and our family has our agricultural history there. We are representing not just Hatters, but we also are representing the African-American legacy families within College Grove. If I may, I would like to ask those descendants of those who either attended school or had loved ones who were buried at Allison Chapel, just to raise their hand so that you can recognize the faces who are here today in this crowd. A recent report by the developer was deeply troubling for us. The historic, it said the historic and cultural resources were not found on this property. This statement is both inaccurate and disheartening. It represents an erasure of history and is disrespectful dismissal of the contributions of our family and other legacy African-American families from this region. Our family has visited the site and witnessed firsthand the visible evidence of its history, and it includes remaining graves, the foundation of the school, and a stovepipe that directly tied into a written and verbal account for my own grandfather, Elder Jasper G. Hatcher. As grandchildren who continue to live, work, and raise families in this community, we believe in progress that honors the past. We are inspired and motivated to preserve all historical and culturally significant sites, not only for our own family, but also for other African-American families in our county, because this is our shared history, not just African-Americans, but this is Williamson County's shared history. So we support the ordinance under section 14 that dedicates protection and maintenance of dedicated open spaces to others. We respectfully urge the planning commission to reject any proposal that would allow for the construction of a septic system, and I'll say that again, a septic system, human excrement, to be near the remains of any of our loved ones. Instead, we ask that this land be formally recognized and protected as a place of cultural and historical importance.
30 seconds, please.
We welcome collaboration with the county and community members, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mark Gerro.
Gerard, sorry. I'll get it right one of these times.
My name is Mark Gerard, and my wife and I are residents of the Owendale Community, directly adjoining the proposed Owen Valley subdivision. I'm an attorney, admitted before the U.S. Supreme Court, and served as head of global litigation for a Fortune 50 company. I applaud Commissioner Clifford's thoughtful comments and believe they are applicable here as well with respect to the concept plan proposed. This proposal and the process surrounding it are a betrayal of the very principles that guide this county's subdivision regs to protect the environment, public safety, and the integrity of our community. After multiple deferrals, the applicant's latest plan actually reduces preserved land and purports to squeeze small, approximately one to one and a half acre lots against existing five acre properties, showing an open disregard for the neighboring landowners and for this commission's trust. This reckless density will drive down property values, overburden infrastructure, and heightened flood risk. This commission should be required to, should require at least a 300-foot opaque buffer and prohibit any access through Owendale Lane or Owendale Way. But the real issue before you is larger. The conservation subdivision exemption has become a developer's loophole, allowing dense suburban-style projects in what have been and are still, thankfully, rural areas. It violates the goals of Williamson 2040, and now it is being used remarkably to desecrate the graves of people whose history is so richly tied to this county's heritage. The people are saying enough is enough. Please reject this constant plan as you did the wastewater treatment facility plan. I stand in full support of those before me and who have yet to speak in opposition to this plan, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Judy Herbert. Judy Herbert. Betsy Hester. Oh, sorry. I didn't see you getting up.
Judy Herbert, and I think I need to get the reverend to do my speech for me, because he can do it a whole lot better than I can. I just want to say that the developer has misled the county on the graveyard, that this property, that the graveyard's much smaller on this property than it truly is. I went to the property and saw remnants of the old school and graves back to the 1800s. And a friend came to the property and used a, I think they call it a diving rod on the property. Have y'all ever experienced one of those? It was fascinating how it can find graves, and it found so many... It was fascinating how it can find graves, and it found so many more so much further out, and that developer hadn't even marked. My mom, many years ago, tried to save a lot of the graveyards in this county, and I'll never forget her talking about a well-known residence, and some of y'all probably know this man, that was trying to destroy a graveyard for a development. The developer's son had died a couple of years before, and she said, "I wonder if that was his son in that grave, would he be okay with destroying it?" And that has stuck in me. When it's your relative, it's different. And my brother-in-law passed away a week ago, and he was buried in a private cemetery. And I cannot imagine how upset we would be if we knew a septic system was next to his grave and it could overflow on his grave, as much as we loved him. And that's the same with all the relatives in this, this room. That's, that's our relatives, and the thought of a septic system coming over their graves is just a horrible thing.
Thirty minutes, or thirty seconds.
Okay, I'll be quick. And, and you know, as we know now, these are state-approved septic systems, and they're beginning to fail. So I'm asking you to deny this request for the wastewater treatment and disposal system. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Hester. Okay, thank you. Jasper Hatcher.
My name is Jasper Hatcher Jr. I'm a sixth-generation, well, fifth-generation farmer. Sixth generation was up before me, Marquinta Harvey. And I just want to say briefly that, representing the fifth generation, we are still farmers there, as Mr. Allen just forestated. And we do have tractors on that road, and we still have cattle, beef cattle, and we'd like to keep it preserved as farmland. And agriculture was first in this nation, and I think it needs to remain first in the nation. So with that being said, I'd like to say also that I've got seven siblings. Nathaniel Hatcher, Lance Buford Hatcher, Raleen Hatcher Anderson, Gwendolyn Hatcher Anderson, Ricky Hatcher Senior, Regina Hatcher Dorsey, and Yunita Hatcher Pope. And we all have an interest in that property that's two miles from where this site is located. And our dad went to school there. He, he had several stories that he told that we still remember and repeat, and it has a lot of legacy and love and just memories. And I'd like to read this last little passage. "We respect and urge the Planning Commission to reject any plans that would allow the construction of a septic system on or near the Allison Chapel site. Instead, we ask that the historic site be protected, preserved, respected as part of our county's shared history. On behalf of the Hatcher family, thank you for your consideration and your commitment to protecting the heritage of Williamson County. We stand ready to work with you and others to ensure Allison Chapel's history and cemetery are preserved for future generations. Thank you."
Thank you. Tara Sturgis. Thank you. Carrie Hammer. Andy Hammer.
Thank you. My name is Andy Hammer. My wife and I and our children live at 6618 Owen Hill Road for about the past seven and a half years. And I'll keep this brief to leave time for others, but believe strongly that the conservation subdivision designation is a loophole, and you need to remain consistent for all the other landowners in our area. RD5 is RD5. There shouldn't be exceptions to that unless we're all given the exception. We've made investments out there. Our kids have grown up in the area, and many around us feel the same way. And so I just want to make sure that we're emphasizing that for you all. Appreciate the words tonight, and also doesn't, doesn't seem, based on the behaviors of the applicant, that there's a whole lot of investment and incentive to really contribute to the community. It's all about one thing, and I think everybody knows what that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Rodder.
Alan Rodder. My name's Alan Rodder. I spoke a little bit earlier. Essentially, I have the same concerns. I live in RD5-zoned area. It's greenbelt property. Tennessee law, you know, allows for greenbelt property to be agricultural property for a long time. That's the reason the law was passed that way. And, you know, if people wanted to divide property into five-acre lots, that wouldn't be a concern. But this particular one's got a whole lot more concerns on top of that, so it's a special situation. But it really makes it hard. And Mr. Holmes, if you could put up the concept plan that the developer has on the screen? I believe you had it up there once before. Yes, right there. The example that's given in the Williamson County zoning ordinance on page 12-4 shows this is what we have as a conservation subdivision. It doesn't look anything like what's in the plan that's been, you know, presented by the developer. It shows a lot of green space, a lot of green space around a little bunch of houses. So I'm trying to understand just for myself, you know, what does this really even mean? It does look like a loophole if people just come in and can get it for whatever reason. So, you know, that's the main concern that I have, but, you know, there's a bigger concern on top of all of it with my neighbors, because they've got ancestors there. There's historical properties there. So on this particular site, you combine all that, that's a really bad thing. But I don't even like seeing this, this happening like this. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. I think the zoning ordinances need to be revised to take this loophole out.
Thank you. Laura Holder.
My name is Laura Holder, and I've lived on Owen Hill Road for 11 years. I'm also a board member on the African-American Heritage Society of Williamson County. I've watched this quiet rural historic road quickly become a developer's goldmine. I'm not anti-development, and neither are most of my neighbors, but we are here tonight to ensure that it's done in the best possible way, preserving and protecting our road's rich history. The Allison Chapel School and Cemetery Site in the proposed Owen Valley subdivision is a vital part of our county's history. Located in a secluded bend of the road, it's the sort of place that most people drive by without realizing that it was once the proud heart of the community. The school was an educational haven for African-American children during a time when Williamson County schools were still segregated. It was also a house of worship, a place where rural families received essential health care from visiting doctors and nurses, and a place where patriotic families raised money for war bonds during World War II. And I have a copy of the research, if anybody would like a copy of it. But even more important, the Allison Chapel Cemetery is the sacred final resting place of people that have worked the land, raised families, educated their children, and taken care of their neighbors. It deserves to be protected in the same way that each of us would want our own family's final resting places to be respected and safeguarded. As Commissioners, we look to you to make sure that this development's plans are reevaluated to protect these sacred places and honor the Owen Hill and Allison Chapel families that have worked so hard to make our county the wonderful place that it is today. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Peth. Oh, Petty, yes. All right. I'll take that, too. Sorry.
I'm Bill Petty. I live in Franklin. I'm a county commissioner. Brian, I thank you for your comments tonight. I thank you all, I thank, Aaron, I thank for the work you did. You laid it out. We, we have rules, we have codes, and we expect people that want to build in our county to follow those. It seems to me this thing's been deferred since July, and, and for somebody to say that there's no sign that there was a foundation or there's other artifacts on that property, well, we've seen pictures of them. We've seen an old cup, a broken-down desk, a stove, foundations, whatnot. We know that it's there, there's no question about it. And putting a sewer system there would be a travesty. With regards to the conservation subdivisions, on Monday night, we changed the code, so it's spread out a little bit more than it used to be. Well, I think it's an improvement. I have the same concerns that other people would share on that. We can talk about that later. But I support what you have done. I think you've done an excellent job of presenting the case for, for the Commission. I respect you folks. I know you have tough decisions to make, and this, this do our development wisely, and this do our development that's going to enhance our, our county and not detract from it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Rebecca Fly.
So I'm the last one. Does that mean I get extra time? So my name is Rebecca Hatcher Fly. So these are my kinfolk. I'm part of the Hatcher Dairy, the Century Farm, and we were very blessed, my husband and I, to buy land on Owen Hill Road. So I am actually less than a quarter a mile down from this subdivision. We have land there, and we bought it under the, the known law of five acres. Thank you for your, what you did, because it means a lot to us. We have children as well. My Hatcher family is buried on Hatcher Lane, and I cannot imagine how I would feel if a septic system was coming in for my great-grandfather. I have a recording when he turned 100 years old that has been passed down of all the episodes on Hatcher Dairy, which I'm sure all of you are familiar with, which is incredible to talk about Bethesda and College Grove and the battles and all the history is amazing. So thank you for your service. I've served on several boards. I know it's not easy, but I totally agree with everything these people have said, representing the Hatcher family on the other side, to please keep it RD5. Thank you.
Thank you. So that will close the public hearing for item number 18. All right. Do we have any comments from the applicant at this point? Do we have any questions among the group of Commissioners? Yes, sir.
I don't want to restate everything I stated before, but for a lot of the same reasons, I'm going to suggest that we deny the application for the same reasons we denied the previous one. I'll give the other Planning Commissioners a chance to make any comments before I make a motion or I'll allow somebody else to make a motion, but I just wanted to go ahead and say that.
Thank you. Any, any other discussion? Yes, sir?
I mean, the main thing that's been added to this, from what we've heard and been told, is that there's not a system connected with this. So because there's not a system connected with this, we can't approve this. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, a septic system. That's correct. Yep. And the, as previously stated, the lack of incomplete application.
Right.
I guess to, to, I guess for clarity's sake, a denial at this point does not prohibit them from applying in the future, as so long as something's different than this application. Is that correct?
So long as the reason that it was denied is addressed.
Right.
And just, just, just real, this is a technical thing, and I guess because I'm a dork, I'm going to say this. It's not a standard septic system, it's a wastewater treatment disposal system, and that's why there's a site plan that's required separate from what would normally be just a traditional septic system. And I know that probably only means something to me, but I just want to make sure that was accurate on the record.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion? Motion. Please. Expand.
Commissioner Crowhan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny based on no adequate wastewater facility and an incomplete application. I have a second on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have one no. Motion passes. Yeah, so we'll take a two-minute break if people would like to leave, and you're welcome to hang out with us. And Aaron's going to work on his computer. I'll call the meeting back to order, please. Can we settle down, please? Thank you.
You want me to go move on? I would just go ahead and start calling the next item.
All right, we will. So moving on to item 19 was on consent. 20 was on consent. 21 was on consent. 22 was on consent. So we are moving on. Item 23 is withdrawn. Item 24 preliminary plat review for Meadowside subdivision Phase 1 containing 55 lots on 69.88 acres located off Patton Road, Patterson Road in the 5th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located off Patterson Road. There you see Patterson Road in the red. Phase 1 totals 71.68 acres. There you see the property boundary in the blue, Phase 1 boundary. Phase 1 will consist of 55 lots. There you see the 55 lots in the pink. There's approximately 32.84 acres of open space in Phase 1. Trail no longer abuts the adjacent property. It now is oriented toward the south. There you see it in the, in the green. Roads will be public. There's the roads in yellow. Water is provided by the Nolanville-Collis Grove Utility District. Lots are served by non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system. There you see the wastewater treatment system in the brown. Preliminary plat is consistent with the revised concept planned. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any discussion on item 24?
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
I remember us discussing this one before and that trail and where it ties in. So it looks like they revised it, but is it just like a dead ending in the middle of the site? Could staff tell us more about the intention there?
Yeah. It was oriented toward the adjacent property to, to the east, and now it's oriented toward the south. It'll, it'll continue down the south property line to Patterson Road.
Okay, so the green dot is just indicating where before it had gone east, but that's not the end of the trail. The trail will, because it looks like the trail is in a dark gray, but then from that point south, I don't see the dark gray, which is what gave me the impression it was just ending.
Well, we asked them to either reorient it or, or take it to, to Patterson Road.
Richard House with SEC again. Originally, it was to go into the existing property line on the, with the lot line on the adjacent properties. That is where staff had asked us to run it to when we brought this in originally in, what was it, Mike, 22? When we brought the original in? Something like that, whatever. It was, and then when we were requested to turn it away from the property next door and give an easement down to the Patterson Road area. We were not requested to extend it, but provide the easement.
I'd like to expand on that. So I'm Michael Nutelli. Nutelli Communities, we're the developer. The alignment of that pathway, that trail, is consistent with the alignment of the Greenway in the Triune Master Plan. So, and the master plan showed that trail ending at our property line and going across and potentially across adjoining neighbors' properties. That's what the Greenway Master Plan showed in the Triune Master Plan. So in the last meeting, we were asked to not orient the end of that Greenway trail toward the neighboring property, and this is the result of that, ending it where it is. So I just want to make sure everybody understands what we did was what the county asked. Originally, the way it was designed originally matched the Triune Master Plan Greenway. But neighbors took exception, wondering why it ended where it did, and wondering whether it was going to be extended across their property. Well, you have to look back at the Triune Master Plan that showed the Greenway to understand all of that. But here we are, and we revised it to end where it is with an easement back to Patterson Road.
Thank you. Any other questions? You good?
One more question then.
Yep.
To staff, on the Triune Master Plan, has that changed at all? Or, you know, what are the thoughts on that trail connectivity?
So as Mr. Nutelli pointed out, the Triune Special Area Plan showed some potential routing of trails. It was never intended to be precise. But then the zoning regulations that we developed to implement that plan, in this case, require the developer to build essentially what was shown in the plan. So what, what the Meadowside developer will do is actually construct the trail in the approximate location and trajectory shown in the plan. But, and I think that's all we can, we can require of them to do. In addition to that, they're extending a public access easement that does come down to Patton. So we feel like that does, you know, meet that requirement. If they wanted to build that trail all the way down to Patton, we'd love it. But the, the trail has depicted that they will build, I think certainly satisfies the requirements of the ordinance.
And how would we, like, how would the public know that that easement exists starting at Patton to go access the trail? If there's no paved trail that goes down to Patton, there's just an easement, how would the public even know it's there then? You know what I mean? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
How it would benefit the public if they're not even clear on that.
And there have been quite a few developments where all we could do is ask the developer to set aside a public access easement so that if a trail network was established in the future, we wouldn't have to acquire that right-of-way. And so, you know, the Greenways Plan that is being conducted right now will make us eligible for, you know, potentially, you know, millions of dollars of grant funds to help implement that. And so we'll know, you know, where those easements are in a lot of cases. And, you know, if the developer doesn't construct those trails or if the HOA doesn't, then if, you know, if, if there's sufficient funds to build the trail, we will have that right-of-way already designated.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion on item 24? Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Item 25 preliminary plat review for Meadowside subdivision Phase 2 containing 40 lots on 30.72 acres located off of Patton Road in the 5th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the property is located off Patterson Road. There you see Patterson Road in the red. Phase 2 totals 30.72 acres. Now, Phase 1 is to the west. This phase will consist of 40 lots. There you see the 40 lots in the pink. There's approximately 21 acres of open space in Phase 2. Roads will be public. There are the roads in the yellow. Water will be provided by the Nolanville-Collis Grove Utility District. Lots are served by a non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system. The preliminary plat is consistent with the revised concept plan. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Any discussion on item 25?
Motion to approve first, staff.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Item 26 preliminary plat review revised for the villages of Triune West containing 312 lots on 156.94 acres located off Murfreesboro Road in the 5th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located off, off of Murfreesboro Road and Horton Highway. There you see the roads in the red. The property totals approximately 168 acres. There you see the property in the blue. The preliminary plat approved in June for 97-lot conservation subdivision and 133-lot townhome developments in the TCA, TCA 3, and TCA 4 districts. BZA granted a special use in May to allow 83 townhome lots in the TCA 2 district. And there you see the 83 townhome lots in the turquoise. Lot totals are now 98 conservation subdivision, single-family lots, and 214 townhome multifamily lots. Now you see the remaining townhome lots in the blue. It contains approximately 59 acres of open space. The applicant is proposing combination of public and private roadways. There you see the roads in the yellow. Numerous, numerous off-site roadway improvements are required in conjunction with this phase. Offsite roadway improvements have been reviewed and approved by TDOT. Wastewater will be handled by the Trone Sewer Facility. Waterway natural areas and natural resource protections have been met. Plat is consistent in layout with the concept plan approved in August of 2025. And staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report, including construction of off-site roadway improvements prior to submit of the first final plat.
Thank you. Any discussion on item 26?
Staff, could you please remind us why the roads that connect to Horton Highway aren't highlighted in yellow? Trying to remember if that was happening with a different phase or...
No, I just wanted to show the internal roadway system.
Well, if the applicant could come up and explain that.
So a portion of the roadway is going to be a county road system that connects to the property to the south, and I believe that's in a different phase, but he can, he can point that out.
Yeah, Will Crunk with Crunk Engineering on behalf of the developer. Yeah, the internal road network within the residential side is going to be private roadway, but then the roadway from 96 that is shown in yellow, from north going south to the first road that then goes east to Horton Highway, that portion is going to be public. And the road from that junction to Horton Highway is going to be part of Phase 1 as well. That's already been approved and construction is starting. So that's part of the public road network as well.
Thank you.
Anything further? Do we have a motion? Item 26. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Item 27 preliminary plat review revised for the villages of Triune East containing 122 lots on 63.78 acres located off Murfreesboro Road in the 5th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is located off Murfreesboro Road and Horton Highway and at Malachi Lane. There you see the roads in the red. The property totals approximately 64 acres. There you see the property in the blue. It's a 58-lot conservation subdivision of single-family lots and a 64-lot townhome development. There you see the townhome lots in the turquoise, the single families in the pink. The preliminary plat approved in July for 59 single-family lots and 64 townhome multifamily lots. Contains approximately 91 acres of open space. The applicant is proposing a private, proposing private roadways. There you see the roads in the yellow. Numerous off-site roadway improvements are required in conjunction with this phase. Offsite roadway improvements have been reviewed and approved by TDOT in Williamson County. Wastewater is handled by the Trone Sewer Facility. Waterway natural areas and natural resource protections have been met. Plat is consistent in layout with the concept plan approved in March of 2025. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report, including construction of off-site roadway improvements prior to submit of the first final plat.
Thank you. Any discussion on item number 27?
Motion to approve first, staff. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Item 28 was withdrawn. Item 29 preliminary plat review for Sunset Hills subdivision containing one lot on 60.78 acres located off of Molly Hollow Road in the 4th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located off of Molly Hollow Road, shown in red on the bottom left of the screen. The development totals 60.78 acres in size and contains one lot shown in the pink. This lot is accessed by an access easement shown in green also the bottom left of the screen. In January 2025, the Board of Zoning Appeals granted a variance to reduce this access easement specifically's width from 50 feet to 40 feet. The property's resource protection standards have been met. Building envelopes will be separated by 200 feet, and fire apparatus standards will be applied. Water is provided by Milcroft and Utility District, and wastewater is handled via individual onsite septic systems, which the Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved, and staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any discussion on item number 29? Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Final plats. Item 30 final plat review for Makina large lot easement subdivision containing four lots on 23.99 acres located off Bethesda Duplex Road in the 2nd voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located off of Bethesda Duplex Road, shown in red on the bottom of the screen, and it totals 23.99 acres in size. The development is shown, outlined in blue. The development contains four lots, shown in the pink, and they will be accessed via an access easement shown in the green. Resource protection standards have been met. Water is provided by HB and TS Utility District, and wastewater is handled via individual onsite septic systems, which the Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved. This final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat, and staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on item number 30? Do we have a motion? Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. We have a motion and a second on item 30. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item 31 final plat review for the construction consulting of Tennessee LLC Property Large Lot Easement Subdivision containing four lots on 82.55 acres located off of Buchanan Lane in the 2nd voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located off Buchanan Lane, shown in red on the right side of the screen. The development totals 82.55 acres in size and contains four lots, shown in the pink. The lots will be accessed by an access easement shown in the green. Resource protection standards have been met. Water is provided by individual onsite wells. Wastewater handled via individual onsite septic systems, which the Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved. This final plat is consistent with the preliminary, and staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any discussion on item 32? Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item 32, right? Yeah. Final plat revised for Vista Creek subdivision containing 17 lots on 137.56 acres located off Old Hillsborough Road in the 9th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located off Old Hillsborough Road, shown in red on the right side of the screen. The development totals 137.56 acres in size. They will be adding one lot to this new revised final plat for a total of 17, from the previous being 16. The development contains approximately 21 acres of open space, and the roads within will be private. Those are shown in the gold, while the open space is in the green. Water is provided by HB and TS Utility District. Lots will be served by individual onsite septic systems, which the Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved. This final plat is consistent with the revised preliminary plat, and staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any discussion on item 32? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item 33 final plat review revised for Vineyard Valley Section 1 containing 26 lots on 31 acres located off Vineyard Valley Drive in the 2nd voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of this and the next two items is to remove sidewalks from the right-of-way by reducing right-of-way width from 40 feet to 38 feet. This variance has been granted. The property is located off of Udalee-Covington Road, shown in red in the center of the screen. The section in question totals 31 acres in size, shown, outlined in the blue, and contains 26 lots, which are all built out, shown in...
built out, shown in the pink, with the internal roadway shown in the gold. Water is provided by the Millcroft and Utility District and lots are served by a non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system. This revised final plat is consistent with the revised preliminary plat and staff recommends approval with the original conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any discussion on item thirty-three?
Is this the one with the sidewalks being reduced?
Correct.
And does this address the concerns noted earlier?
Yes, other than the one homeowner who wants to...
Is it correct that if we recommend approval or if we issue an approval, then will the sidewalks be able to remain as they, as they have been installed at the forty-eight inch width? Are they going to have to go back to thirty-six?
The sidewalks remain the same size. They are just going to reduce the actual right-of-way, so they're outside of it.
No construction then?
Correct, sir.
Commissioner, if you approve this, then the applicant will be afforded the extra time that he asked for to persuade the additional property owner to sign the plat. So, this plat will be valid for sixty days. If they don't acquire the signature, they would need to come back for reapproval of the plat.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those, or do we have a motion? Second? We have a motion and a second on item thirty-three. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Item thirty-four final plat review revised for Vineyard Valley Section Two containing sixteen lots on sixteen point one-six acres located off Nellis, Nellis Branch Drive in the second voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the purpose of this is to remove the sidewalks from the right-of-way by reducing right-of-way width from forty feet to thirty-eight feet. This variance has been granted and staff recommends approval with the original conditions outlined in the staff report.
Awesome. Thank you. Any, any discussion on this item?
Is this the same issue as the last one?
Correct.
Exact same, same outcomes, sixty days, all that stuff?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Item thirty-five final plat review revised for Vineyard Valley Section Three containing twenty-six lots on thirty-seven point five-eight acres located off Nellis Branch Drive in the second voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the same as the previous two items. The purpose is to remove sidewalks from the right-of-way by reducing right-of-way width from forty feet to thirty-eight feet, and the variance for this has been granted, and staff recommends approval with the original conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to other business, item thirty-six was withdrawn. Item thirty-seven is the 2026 Planning Commission schedule of meetings, or schedule and schedule of meetings. Any discussion on that? I did note you moved off of fall break and...
Yes, so the, we put the revised schedule in front of you, and so in March is where we moved the date for, to accommodate spring break, and so next year in 2026, the spring break in, or excuse me, fall break in October will actually fall on the third, so we'll move back to our normal second Thursday of the month in October.
We need a motion and a second on this?
Yes, sir, we do.
Uh, let's see, on Thursday, October fifteenth, it looks like you made it October eighth?
That is correct. So, we've double-checked the calendar this morning. Also, we were notified that we had placed the wrong date on there, so we corrected it. So, you're looking at your revised item thirty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Do we have a second? Motion, or we have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Last item is item thirty-eight Terra Vista Rose Drainage and Erosion Control Bond Update. Is there somebody? Yeah.
Hi, my name is Brent Thany. I'm with Trulane Consulting here on behalf of Jones Company. Current status is the geotech's done about seventy-five percent of their geotech work, field work. They've got one more spot to check. Hopefully have those reports next week. Do not have the NOC as of yet. About a week and a half, two weeks ago, T-Deck reached out to the engineer, asked for some additional information. That was sent, and so we're still waiting for that. Have two different bids we're working through and stuff works out next week. Hopefully be on site to do the remaining site work that remains. Other engineering and those type things have been validated and done.
Thank you. Any, any questions?
Any further holdup?
I'm sorry?
You don't see any further holdup at this point?
Uh, hopefully not, no. It shouldn't be. I mean, once we get the NOC and now that we have the bids and the geotech work is the critical part. Talking to them, they don't see any concerns. From what they've seen so far.
What's the update you'd want to give next, next month? I guess what's particular?
Hopefully, weather allows, we're done. Or, we're done with our part, you guys will re-inspect and then, that's the intent. Thank you.
I have a question. What is the intent to address the topic of the gravel driveway that was mentioned earlier and gravel making its way onto the pavement?
That's part of the NOC from the state. That'll be, in the plans, there's kind of two different iterations of where it is, and so it's changing to, like of a better way, kind of be an S pattern up to the wastewater facility, and so that'll be regraded and redone.
So, you're saying by reconfiguring that roadway, it's going to eliminate the gravel making its way onto the pavement?
That is the hope and the intent, correct. And the gravel will change. One of the things we'll talk to engineering about is changing that. I think right now the engineering calls out for like one to three-inch stone and putting more of like a crusher runner base stone down, so over time that essentially become more like concrete, if you will.
Yes, sir, sir.
We're getting into the rainy season and it's going to be wet, real wet, and I've seen videos of that cul-de-sac and that runoff. Is there anything you can do in the meantime while you're waiting? Because I, I mean, I've seen kids play in there.
It'll take more than an acre to disturb it and to change it, and so by T-Deck, if you're going to disturb more than an acre, you have to have a notice of coverage.
Okay, and there's nothing you can do right there to keep the runoff from coming onto the road?
We can put some of the silt worms back up and ask, I think what's partly happened in the company that's maintaining it is driving over them and tearing them up, and with the type of gravel that is, it's very hard for them to get traction, and so I think what's happening, they're spinning out a lot trying to get out that hill.
Yeah. This neighborhood's been screaming at us for a while.
Sure.
It might be a good show of, uh, from the developer to take care of some of these things and maybe remedy to the extent they can, because every month we get emails about what's going on in this neighborhood.
Right.
It might be good for y'all to take a proactive step, perhaps.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you for the update.
Sure.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? So, move. Let's do it. Thank you.